All right, I'll call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It is six oh one, so I guess we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a round of introductions.
Andrew Olver.
Rachel Anderson.
Richard Bremmst.
Peter Crusoe Town Administrator.
Joseph Baker.
And Jennifer will be late, she'll join us probably executive session, so. The new earlier hours kind of conflict with some schedules, so. I like them. All right, let's dive right into new business, Bannigan School Park update with Kevin.
So I don't see him here.
He's not here.
That's okay, we reschedule.
We're gonna skip over that, okay. Maybe he's not aware of the earlier time. Consideration of appointment of Kathryn Whitten to COA for term ended six thirty of twenty seven. So this is, um. So the terms are what, three years? How does that work?
Yeah, it's a vacancy, so it's filling a vacancy of Sharon Solinsky.
Ah.
That's why I put in the
Okay.
two-year term, which I think is correct for her.
So it wouldn't expire.
I might be wrong.
Yeah, it wouldn't expire in twenty-five and then a reappointment, okay. Do you wanna come on up and talk about yourself? All right, that's enough, I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
I'm just kidding.
She is rolling away from me.
I'm nervous as it is.
Hi, Sandra Caswell, eighty-nine Thayer Street. I'm the chairperson of the Council on Aging, and it is the council's recommendation that we appoint Kathy to the vacancy that we now have. Kathy's been involved with the Senior Center for the past five years, and as you know, she is our van coordinator and one of the van drivers. Takes our seniors to grocery shopping, picking up prescriptions, medical appointments, and arranges little trips every so often so we can get out of town. Kathy, last year, organized the seniors' first trunk-or-treat that we ever had, and it was a huge success. Everybody liked it, so we'll be doing it again next year, and it'll be a yearly tradition. She has taken over the craft classes. She is helping out, this Friday, we're having a CPR class at the Senior Center, and she was instrumental, excuse me, in getting that off the ground. She is able to serve food on our Thursday lunches because she's serve-safe. Or is that safe-serve?
Safe-serve?
Safe-serve.
Serve-safe.
She's safe, she's safe to, she's safe to serve food.
We assume the food is safe.
And she's safe too. What else? I mean, she has a great rapport with our seniors, they love her, she respects them, everybody gets along. We're just thrilled to have her as our candidate, and we hope that you will accept her also as our candidate.
If we don't accept her, you have to leave to Blackstone tonight immediately.
Well, my husband won't go to Blackstone, but we'll go somewhere else. Yeah, so like Sandy said, I've been with the Senior Center going on five years. Started out as just a driver, and then when Tony left, I took over as the coordinator. I help out Tina as much as I can in the Senior Center. I love working with the elderly, I have my whole life, just any little thing I can do for them. Like Sandy said, coming up with new trips for us. We just had a senior that passed, so we're, you know, doing something in memory of her.
Oh, the indoor yard sale?
Yeah, we had indoor yard sale.
She organized an indoor yard sale a few weeks ago.
Yeah, so the money that we got from that will go in as a meal for the members in Sherry's name, so.
Okay, question, maybe more for Peter, but how many board members are there on COA?
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Seven members?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have, what, a director that is appointed by the COA, how does that work?
Well, you're the appointing authority, but they, you know, are managing the day-to-day with her.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
So would you be continuing as the coordinator slash van driver, or?
Yes, I will keep the position, yes.
Okay, how does that work in congruence with ethic laws? Because the COA supervises the van drivers and that, the operations of the COA.
Well, I think that if it came down to like any kind of voting, I wouldn't be allowed to vote.
Yeah, she would recuse herself.
Yes.
Okay, and then you'd be getting paid and then not paid for some positions, is that?
Yeah, I wouldn't get paid as a board member.
No, 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 yeah, I know that they don't get paid, but you'd be paying, being paid as a van driver too, right?
For when I drive, yes.
So I'm just concerned about the
So she's paid as a coordinator and the van driver only, like all those other things, she's volunteering.
It's volunteer, yes.
From what I understand, right? And so, yes, she would have to recuse herself should there be, you know, a matter that the committee votes on.
Okay, has this, go ahead, I was gonna say, has this been run by anything to look at just in case there's any complications with it? Do, I mean, would we need a special employee?
So There's a form, there's something, there's off of the state website, it's the disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by appointing authority. And I've got the GLC number and all of that, so she's just, basically, it says anytime we're talking about van driver salaries, things like that, again, she procused herself. But on all other matters, as far as the COA is concerned, she'll be right there.
Yeah, that's the same form that you're familiar with, I think, and filed with the town clerk.
If anybody ever has any questions, too, you can always ask for a legal opinion. Send the Ethics Board an email, and they'll urge you to come back with a written confirmation. How many van drivers do you have?
We have three, there were myself, and then we have two Denises.
Okay.
They mostly do a lot of the driving because we've been so, like, on the slower side.
Sure.
So I just pretty much make the phone calls, receive the phone calls from the seniors, put the information into the computer, print out the paperwork, and then assign them their runs, and then the rest of the time, I'm just at the center volunteering, helping out Tina.
Okay, so you guys have a logbook, a trip book?
Yes, I have a calendar book.
Okay.
So it's logged into that calendar book, and then it's also logged into my Senior Center application.
Okay. One of the things that's been kind of popping up, and I really hate to mention it, I'm sure you probably want to go with it too, but you don't really want to say it, the budget line for the, for the drivers, is that something now that you're going to join COA to look at? Because that's historically always run over budget?
Well, but if you recall, for FY twenty-six, we grossed it up, basically, because we reflected the foundation grant, I think is what you call it, right?
Yep.
As a revenue item, and so the net effect was zero, but tried to reflect the the tracking real cost in next year's budget.
Yeah, with that bump in the budget, it shouldn't be an issue, tracking the way it's been the last few years.
So that's fixed, okay.
Yes.
You're right, and I mean, we combine people whenever possible, too, something's going on at the Senior Center, we pick up three at a time, you know, grocery shopping is not usually one person, so.
Right.
That's, she's very good at that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, do we need to have a special employee?
So she's gonna fill out the disclosure form, I don't, I don't.
No, but the special employee thing is a different
Yes.
status, which would be through us.
Yeah, I don't know that that's required, I could find out.
Well, I think it would be, because whenever we've had other positions where they're paid or non-paid, and they're just multiple positions.
Yeah.
I know we have that exemption because we're a small town, but that still needs to have a
Right.
us go through it.
Do you think that would hold up the motion for tonight?
I mean, it would hold, it would influence my vote, I'd say, at the moment, because I'm not, because that's what we
I don't understand what you're talking about, could you?
Yeah, so, so special
Speak a little louder, you're so soft.
Sorry, yeah.
Or I'm going deaf, I don't know, what am I gonna do?
So, so in the smaller towns, you can have people be in multiple positions, whether they're paid or unpaid, but for that to happen, you have to go before the Board of Selectmen and have a, become a special employee, it's called. So that's, and that's a status that's given out to certain people, like, for instance, only a few positions, like the Board of Selectmen, have that automatically when you are elected, we can, that's why we can go on multiple boards and whatnot, but for the regular employees, that has to go through us to be, have that status, so.
Yeah, so I will double-check, but I don't think that's a, typically, we've done that in situations where somebody wore one or more than one hat that was compensated. We're not talking about that in this situation, it's a voluntary.
Isn't it? Because this, because there's the van driver and the coordinator, those are two separate positions.
Well, no, I only get, I only get paid the driver salary, I don't get anything for coordinator. And then the only other thing I get is I get six hours a week for the phone, because I have the phone on me constantly, the calls are from eight AM to three PM. So when I took over as coordinator, they gave me just an additional six hours a week pay for that. I'm actually, I'm the longest driver there, and I'm actually the one getting paid the least, because I had moved away for a while
Yeah.
and did it, did the phone calls virtually.
So you're still two positions that are getting paid, right?
Well, I'm getting paid when I drive, and then six hours a week for the phone.
Yeah, so there's, there's two positions that are getting paid, yeah.
That wouldn't be considered the same position?
No, because it's a coordinator and a van driver, aren't those classified as two different positions with the Senior Center?
They're two different positions, but she's only got, we've only got the one employee ID, and we
The employee ID would be just representing the person, yeah.
So it's just, she doesn't, she only gets paid one set amount, she doesn't get paid like a different amount for the coordinator and a different amount for the
So how do you distinguish what you're paying for each position, then?
Well, we're not really, we're just paying the one line.
So you're pulling from the same line for both?
Yeah, there's no, there's no separation in any of my things for a van coordinator and a driver. It's all just the one.
It's the same as Tina being our director and also being an outreach coordinator. I mean, she's doing both, she's getting paid one.
Yeah, but that's, that's a title, that's, it's like a treasurer collector, it's two different things, but it's the same job. This isn't
Not really, an outreach coordinator and a, and a director, not at all.
Yeah, but they're, it's titled as one position, just like a treasurer collector, those are two different positions, but basically every town
For the town, we've got two different positions there for that. And the new schedule that just came out with the dollars that are supposed to be paid, so you have another person that's doing two specific jobs, being called as one, and being paid to the low end of that entire schedule, so. That was voted on at the town meeting again this year.
And that, you're talking about the salary schedule, it's the last one article.
Yeah, exactly, with all of the title positions.
Yeah, and the range of pay.
Yeah, same difference.
A new range.
So do you want to table it, or do you get clarification, or?
That's your call, I get further clarification, I think it's a distinction of
If we made a vote tonight without her being certified as the special
Municipal employee status.
Yeah.
Which is up to you guys.
Would that be a problem for us? I don't, I just want to make sure we're not
I mean, I don't think it's a huge issue, I mean, I it could be clarified after the fact, I mean, I know, I get it, we're walking a fine line, we could, we could table it to the next meeting.
Well, that's a, so you're, you're appointing her as a volunteer. That's, that's what's before you tonight.
Right.
Separately is a matter of form clarity, if you will, for her pre-existing role, which has been in place a good couple of years now, right?
It'll be five years in September.
You're, you're serving the town, you put on the hat of the coordinator, put on the hat of your driving, but it's the same thing, so that's a you see what I'm saying, Andrew? I think that's worth clarity to make sure that there's, if it should be special municipal employee status, but you're not
Voting that.
That, that's right, you're not voting that tonight.
Right.
So I defer to you, whatever you're comfortable with.
Joe, what do you think?
My votes could be the same either way, so.
Rachel? But, not, I'm not gonna put you in the spot, but I mean, I'm fine with it, I, I understand Andrew's point, and could be valid, we could probably get some clarification, but
Can we put on next agenda to certify her as a
So we've been going through the process on this for three months now, since Sharon was gone, so we're down to six people. Our COM members are very active in everything that we do as volunteers. And it would be nice that she would actually, she pointed out an issue on one of the notes, somebody's name and so forth, that I mean, I send the notes to everybody, and everybody says it looks great, but it's nice to have a full board talking about all of the, we've got all kinds of activities coming up this summer. You know, Kathy has been very, she's, she's been very instrumental in adding all kinds of new ideas, and I mean, it's nice to be recognized, and she's already basically doing the work without the ability to vote, without the ability to actually review our minutes. We're not gonna be talking anything financial, because we're done with that, hopefully, for a few months, so, I mean, we would like to have a full board.
And I would say, too, kind of echoing what you just said, Peter, I mean, I agree that it might be something we want to look into as far as payment is concerned, but that is not what's on the agenda tonight. What's on the agenda tonight is appointing her as a volunteer, and as a volunteer only.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Kathryn Whitten to COA for the term ending six thirty of twenty twenty-seven.
I'll vote aye.
You want to second it?
Oh, that's a second, sure.
Okay, take a vote.
Aye.
I'm an aye, Rachel?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you very much.
That was painful. Feel free to have a drink later.
I'll take two.
Can her certification for, like, not certification, but the listing of her as a special town employee be done after this?
Yeah, I think we could probably do it after the fact, right?
So that's cleared up?
A special, or do we have to add?
Yeah, again, it, it has nothing to do with this vote, you
Yeah.
But I will explore that and see whether
Point of opinion, though, whether or not it's involved. You got the same employee with multiple positions.
You will be updated, and to the extent there's a reason to vote on it
On the next agenda.
that will be on your next agenda.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I add one more thing, and then we'll be out of your hair?
I don't have much of it left.
I wasn't being personal, and you have new members since the last time we've gone through this, so it's been a couple of years since we had a new a new appointee on our board, but there are policies and procedures, they are on the town website, and you can take a look at how we appoint membership.
Sure.
What we go through in order to do that, advertising and so forth, there's also when somebody resigns and the forms that are required, so, anyway, in case you're interested, it's all on there for you to see.
I have enough reading tonight, so I'm gonna take your word for it, maybe another time.
Sure, just wanted to say it's on there.
I'm gonna delegate to Joe. Joe, read all those documents.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, C, consideration of senior tax write-off service at Blackstone Animal Shelter, what's this, Peter?
So, Senior Center coordinates a lot of senior tax write-off positions, and they do various tasks. And Tina came to me with, you know, we do a core check, I do the core checks on all new hires, if you will, and appointments and things like that, and so Tina described the situation, which is a vol, which is you're gonna offset that person's taxes to the tune of a thousand dollars, basically, for performing services at the Blackstone Animal Shelter, and the question that I raised, and I, I think it's if you were asked my opinion, I have no objection, but I just wanted to clarify, right? Because we are under an inter-municipal agreement with Oxbridge, you know, six other, you know, six towns in total, including Millville, managed by Oxbridge. Employees of the Animal Control Officer under that IMA are employees of Oxbridge, so we pay our fair share. One of the elements of the things that happen under that inter-municipal, inter-municipal agreement is animal shelter is at the Blackstone Animal Shelter, so I'm not sure how that fits into the budget that's split up amongst the towns, but it, so I reached out to Mark Montmaney, Chief Mark Montmaney, who is the the administrator of the inter-municipal agreement, to get his opinion on this and see whether it's an issue, and he's all for it, it, you know, it hasn't really happened yet, but he's all for it, so I, I think that, that alone weighs a lot, because my recollection is that there's not much, if any, charge by Blackstone for the Blackstone Animal Shelter to the inter-municipal agreement managed by Oxbridge, or in their, their budget. And so, we're really getting free services to a degree from Blackstone, so this in itself makes, you know, is a fair exchange for that, if nothing else.
How do we pay, how do we pay into that agreement?
So we pay Oxbridge directly, they bill us twice a year for that
As a standard rate?
And it's a standard inter-municipal agreement, no, I don't like the one that's next on your agenda, for example. So this is just, and we haven't exhausted the annual senior tax write-offs. The town, back in the day, approved seven for seniors, I think, and three for veterans, who could be seniors as well.
Yeah.
And we're up to, you know, maybe four or five in a particular year, and so we've never exhausted the ten grand that's in the budget for that as an offset to tax revenue effectively.
Okay.
Okay, so, I just wanted to put it for you, whether you had any issues with that. Again, I don't, I think it makes sense, especially after checking with Mark Montmaney, and, and the way Blackstone provides the service, in part, they provide it because they also generate revenue and fees and stuff that stays there to help fund that operation, and I think they get contributions from people as well to fund that operation over there, so.
So I have two questions for you. One, how does a senior apply for this? What's the process?
Junior, Tina generally offers it.
Sure, come on up, next victim.
Okay, so generally, what happens is people, it's, it's on the town website about the tax work-off. The information is up there, so generally, people will contact me, so then I have to then try to, with their help, try to find them something to do within the town, like
Okay.
I have somebody who's working up at the town, works with
Highway.
Highway. I have him up, I have somebody there, I have somebody down here at this, at the town hall. So this lady came in to me, and she volunteers currently for the dog shelter.
Sure.
So she was like, can I do that for the tax work-off, and I said, I don't see why you couldn't, you know, so, and I spoke with Kevin afterwards, when Peter was questioning, ooh, let me check into this, so I talked to Kevin, and Kevin has people from different towns that are utilizing the tax work-off program, so, so I said, I think it works.
It would be nice to see some sort of like a portal with the applications, yeah.
I have more comments, can I help? So when we put this together several years ago, and it was voted by the town,
Yeah.
the way this should work is, and we went to all the different departments in town, and we said, hey, this is a new program, other towns do it in the, in the state of Massachusetts, you need some help, we've got all kinds of people that have just recently retired, they have got all kinds of skills, they want to still work, but they don't want to really work full-time, and to give them a thousand dollars off on their taxes next year for doing this year's work would be great, tell us what you have, can we help answer the phone, can we file, can we do this, can we do that? We got very little response, so because of Tina, and now people starting to come to her and say, hey, I'd like to do something, but I don't see anything posted, so as a new board, if you can maybe motivate some of our departments in town to say, hey, here's some thousand-dollar labor, you get some really good experience here for people who want to work, so.
Well, is that something that, Peter, we possibly want to let COA put on their webpage?
Well, they already have.
It is, it's on there.
There, and then let you vet the
We have the applications from the, from the town hall, yeah.
Matt's point is, you know, is a good one, we, we did explore some things, and the sense of the department heads was the hassle
Yeah, trying to train somebody.
Training and all that, there was that, and I agree, you know, I admit that that was the case, but it's worth another, take another look at it.
Making some phone calls, checking some invoices, making sure things go out on time, I mean, there are people, I mean, I mean, we all have skills.
Knowing this, this probably would have helped out the police department.
It can help you things.
Well, we still have a couple of openings, so we could always
It is for veterans as well as seniors.
Yes, sir. What can I help you with?
If I may, just so everybody understands, it's up to a thousand dollars.
Correct.
That's right. So it's not an automatic thousand dollars.
Right.
Right.
You've got to work for that.
Right, it's up to minimum wage.
The max, the max is a thousand dollars.
Sure.
So, you know, you put in your hours
Per year.
you get paid, and that's what
And they can keep working after, you know, they like it so much, they hit their max, but, so next year, they'll get a thousand off, but, I mean, it's
It's not that many hours, it's only about seventy hours throughout the year.
I have to apologize, because I, I did a typo on the agenda, I wrote tax write-off, it's tax work-off.
Yeah, it's a work-off.
Yeah.
My apologies.
So my second question is, what's the ask here, Peter? What do you need from us?
If you have objections, you could take a vote to approve this sort of thing, but I don't know that you necessarily need to do that.
They're already doing it, so, I mean, it's already in the board.
Well, they're not doing it.
Well, no, she, we haven't, I, did you do the core on her?
Yeah, the core is good.
The core is good, yeah, so I haven't said, go ahead, because I was waiting for this meeting, so.
Yeah, but we don't have to approve each individual person.
No, 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 no. No, I just wanted to be sure, because this is uniquely different, it isn't providing services directly to the town of Millville, it's an indirect service that still benefits Millville by way of the, you know, the inter-municipal agreement and all that, so it's all good.
Those poor animals that cross the border.
Yeah.
Undocumented.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's so bad, we're also collecting animal foods and supplies over at the Senior Center, too, which Kevin Sullivan picks up on a regular basis, so, and they go to Blackstone.
So they'd still be a Millville quote-unquote employee, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Covered by insurance?
No insurance is
Well, I think we looked into that, right? There's no insurance coverage, and they're not really employees that, but they would get a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year
Right.
For the thousand bucks, okay?
Yeah. Massachusetts
Payroll, not service.
Unearned income, yeah.
Okay.
Massachusetts doesn't charge tax for this, but the federal government does, so.
All right.
So there you go.
Fair enough, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have any comments, questions, all right, moving on. Consideration of regional planning IMA with Mendon, all right, what are you doing, Peter?
Well, we have a regional planning IMA
I read about this.
through this end of year with Oxbridge and Mendon and Millville, and we get six hours of Dylan's time as our planner. Dylan is moving to a full-time basis as Mendon, and Mendon has offered to provide us the six hours of time, basically, that we were getting per week on a forty-hour week, so that's what this IMA is, it's a slightly more expensive, because their, their benefits, I think, are more expensive than Mendon, but we, we'll figure that out, find a way to make it work within the budget. I, this is looking for you to approve that you sign off on this, if you I've reviewed it, compared it to the existing IMA, and basically, the terms are all there, if not better. The only thing is, I'm going to, even if you signed, approved and signed it, I would ask you to make it subject to my clarifying the minimum hours, because in the current contract, we have minimum hours, and it's one hour for meetings twice a month, and the other time is really principally here, so I just want to clarify that a little better, this is a bit ambiguous on that, and I want to be sure we, ensure we get more face time here in the building, so.
What's the additional cost?
So it's a couple of grand, it's a
Per year?
It's a grand, it's a grand more than I think I budgeted. Sixteen grand for Millville for next year, all in for, you know, benefits and stuff, and I can tell you what we budgeted for that position, I think we held it flat at fifteen. So there's other items in the planning budget, so the total budget can, can cover it. And maybe you get to a year-end transfer of a few hundred bucks
Okay.
next year.
So what do you need from us?
Approval for you to sign, you know, to sign the agreement, approval of the agreement and for you to sign it as the chair, because that's what it calls for, and I have a signature page here. Okay?
All right, so we don't have to make a motion, you want, you want me to just sign it?
I think you should make a motion to approve it, should it be subject to Peter clarifying the hours of service? Minimum hours of service, okay?
Yeah, because I was gonna say, on that, like, if the meeting, because it's a planning board meeting, I'm assuming they run over probably close to the two hours usually.
Correct.
So then
That's three hours of a week six, if you will, okay? So it remains for three, but this states, minimum office hours in Millville, attendance at bi-weekly planning board meetings, and three office hours before each meeting, and it was attendance at the bi-weekly meetings and one hour before each meeting, rest of the hours were basically here, subject to the town administrator or town manager at Oxbridge managing the person's time for remote. So I just want to get a little more face time than this describes, I'm not sure of the precise wording, I'll work that out with my counterpart in Mendon.
Well, if you increase the time, though, wouldn't that increase the
It's not increasing the time, it's just how the minimum specification of Not increasing the time, it's just how the minimum specification of service is, that's all. In house, and I, I don't really have a problem, even as it is, I just want to see if we can get a little bit better. Consistency with what was there because it's three hours before their meeting, where before it was one hour before their meetings, you follow me?
Yeah.
Well, if you're asking me to sign, does anyone want to make a motion?
Well, yeah, just one more quick question on that, so. Half the year there are only, most of the time they're just in the meetings then, basically?
Most of the time is meetings and, and support for meetings, and it's really serving the planning board. And in your package, you see from the chair of the planning board.
Yeah.
You know, want to keep the, keep the things going here with uh, with Dylan who, you know, they have high, high praise and. Every interaction we've had with Dylan, she's very professional, you've seen her at town meetings and so forth, the work is great, they've done a lot of work. Improving the zoning bylaws and things like that, that can continue working with, with Dylan here as well as in Mendon.
Then the Huxbridge agreement that already expired or is expired?
Expiring at the end of the year, and I've met with the, you know, the town manager over there just to make sure he wasn't, he's not. Going to do anything that would create an I M A or the need to create an I M A, given the courtesy of. Do you need us to participate in what he's planning to do? He does not.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion if I'm gonna sign? I'm just asking.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair of the board of selectmen to sign the regional planning. I M A with Mendon, as written pending clarification from the town administrator on the hours.
Second, take a vote.
Aye.
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 Fair enough.
There you go, sir.
Let's make it happen.
Great. Okay, thank you.
All right. E fiscal year twenty-five, end of year transfers.
This evening, um, there's really nothing specific yet to put in front of you next meeting.
Potential, okay. Old business, M E S Water status update, um, Jennifer is um not here yet, but uh, do you want to touch upon?
Uh, just like one of the key issues was the million dollar grant paperwork, you know, the agreements. Uh, I've communicated with the gentleman at the state who's responsible for that, they had a week's downtime on their system.
Sure.
With, which they generate contracts, so I, I would expect to see something this week or next week from them, so. It's not like we're lost in the queue, we're in the queue, we're high up in the queue, so that's happening. You know, we've met with Mary Jude Pigsley, we've met with McClure in terms of planning, we're meeting again by Zoom with uh. Uh, Mary Jude Pigsley um this week, just to talk more on the planning of this grant implementation. Um, I was at a, just steal from my T A report, but I was at, and since we're on M E S Water. I, I was invited to uh a celebration of fifty years of Mass D E P. Which was at Worcester Polytech today, so I went up there and listened to uh, and met the commissioner of Mass D E P. I said hi to Mary Jude, I said hi to our main water. Bureaucrat is probably not the right word, but that is the right word.
Liaison.
Yeah, our main water guy, uh, Bob Vostwick, who's uh, you know, and I, I just complimented them on. Being part of our team for doing this, um, so I think I helped Millville look good. Being at this thing, there were all sorts of accolades, and it was a good thing, they, they are devoted to trying to. Make the world a better place environmentally, both from water and air and. You know, what goes in the ground and things like that.
Start right here in Millville first.
And Millville is on the forefront of uh the million dollars of doing what we're gonna do here, so it's pretty good.
Okay, and I see you do have discussion of the B M R vote, um, so they are putting the children back in.
That's right.
Um, pending um construction beginning August first, so. The kids are going back to Millville, so, exciting news. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? All right, moving on, departments.
I got nothing for you. Way you like it sometimes.
Way we like it, public forum?
Just a quick question on that discussion of the vote. Um, my understanding on that was uh that the. Kids will go back as long as we have started construction?
Started, yes.
Not completed and not have started.
Started, yep.
So it's just a matter of starting that uh construction on that, um, and then um, there was no timeframe. That I understood, um, matter of fact, I think if I remember correctly, um, it was offered that the water would be offered all the entire year.
Yep.
Okay, so we, we've got that budgeted, um, seemed to me that. The requirements that they had or the staff who that was in the midst of it, um, was then clarified.
Yeah.
Long as we get this thing granted, things going and get it started, we should be all set with that and the kids. The teachers should be happy because they know where they're going, um, and it should pretty much settle the issue. And I think it's a long time coming and congratulations, all the folks will work their tail off to get to it. And especially for the folks um on the Blackstone side that also saw the light and decided to help as well, so. Just glad they're all back because best facility, let's get it done, so thanks for doing that.
We're gonna get it done. All right, uh, folks in the back, you have something to say, come on down.
Jamie Lorenzo, one forty-four Central Street. Looking, we may or may not be in the right place, um, looking for some, some guidance.
Sure.
We have been back and forth with uh planning Dylan Lynn Hall, who I mentioned earlier, uh, since late January. Trying to, we have a couple of properties on Mansfield Drive, uh, looking to put a duplex on for our two sons. We've been getting the runaround since January, she's been trying to get us in touch with Tom Mulvey.
Zoning board chair, yeah.
He won't get back.
Yeah, so we just, it's been unresponsive since, and uh, supposedly there's some, they got them classified incorrectly. Uh, they, the map shows them as commercial business, they have them zoned as Villa's residential, uh, different setbacks for each zone.
Correct, yeah.
Um, so it's just a matter of trying to clarify that before we can process proceed further.
Sure.
Um, we're just not getting anywhere, so we're looking to see, is, is Tom the right guy to get a hold of?
From what I was told, because I've been back and forth with Dylan.
Dylan has been great.
And she's awesome, she's actually tried to reach out to uh Tom as well. He just won't get back to me, I've probably emailed him ten times and.
So under the bylaws, I, I view this as a complaint, and under the bylaws.
I don't want to complain, but.
Investigate, well, it's kind of like a complaint, anyway, I'll reach out to Tom, if you can send me some. Information about, you know, if you've had email correspondence or whatever, if you could send that to me.
This is the person to talk to.
Okay, fantastic.
Well, don't get him mad at me.
But this is also not the governing body for what you're trying to do.
Yeah, legally that falls through planning and um, you know, the, the planning folks are pretty busy, and they are a, a great crew, but um.
Yeah, we spoke with Janet in the building department, um, Dylan in the planning, and she's, you know, it's just. We're just kind of running around in circles since January.
Problem with having a small town is it's a collateral duty and everybody's working full-time jobs.
Right, so that's, that's the only reason that we're here, trying to figure out the process.
Sure, Peter will rectify, he'll be right along with you.
I appreciate that. Thanks for your help.
You're more than welcome. Uh, all right. Want to wait for Peter for a moment or?
Thanks for your help, guys.
More than welcome, good luck.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right, announcements, Peter?
Uh, let's see, uh, the library gnome project that you all approved at your last meeting is underway, I've seen from Facebook. And, and there's also a historical thing, and I can't get it Facebook on my computer here somehow or other. I was looking for the thing that you asked to be posted here.
Ice cream window there.
It's on the ice cream window, so what, but it's, it's A Mill. They're gonna give a presentation at the senior center on a Thursday night, is it? Dated of six.
Go ahead, keep going.
I'm gonna say six nineteen. Did I do that right?
I, I hope so.
That's all based on recollection.
No, that, that is true.
And it's posted on Facebook and it's posted throughout the town, yeah.
Yeah, and he's, he's done an excellent job.
Oh, yeah.
His history of the town, and it was by popular demand, people wanted to have him come back, so they, they're gonna have. Some refreshments and things like that up there and have him also answering questions and bringing up some memorabilia from the town. Uh, from years ago, so it should be a very interesting evening.
All right, that sounds exciting.
I went to the last one that he did up there at the library, fantastic, I was like, he did a wonderful job, I, I would recommend anybody who that. Has any interest in it.
Okay. Correspondence?
Uh, really nothing, no.
No nasty letters, huh?
No.
Surprised, all right.
Either ignoring you or they think you, you all do a good job, I don't know which.
All right, minutes, what do we got?
Uh, minutes, I gotta get on somebody's case here because you're gonna get deluged, so I have nothing for you tonight.
Carrying on, selection reports, anybody have anything?
Um, so I went to the Memorial Day thing last week, and so it was really nice. Uh, Warren Campbell, uh, who's like the veterans kind of liaison for that, uh, scheduled, like. Set it all out and all that, um, and he also gave us this to keep, which is like a, a proclamation for that day. And I thought the town can keep that, um, put it somewhere safe.
Cool.
And uh, yeah, it was really nice, and he said, um, for Veterans Day, so November eleventh. That um, they'll be doing another thing on the green over near the.
All right.
Yeah.
I believe we uh, highly fertilized that.
I'll bet you did, yes.
And get the grass a little bit greener over there.
Yes, and they put some bug stuff down or something, they did some other, other.
Trying to get, trying to get Peter to add lime to it, try to darken that one.
That would be nice.
Yes, sir.
What happened to that, that tree that's dying that they had planted there? They had a beautiful tree there, they had, had to cut one down if you remember, and they planted a brand new one there, and.
That one died?
It ain't there no more, so I'm assuming it died.
Must have.
I don't know, I, I, I just was curious on that, maybe, maybe we ought to look at.
Different trees?
Well, it's not that difficult to do, I mean, you know, you can get them fairly reasonably, but it's kind of a. You're right, when it comes to the veterans, whatever they need, um, all favorites are helpful.
Sure.
They, they did everything for us, it's, a tree's not that big a deal, just thought if we, we lost the tree there, it'd be nice if we were able to put one back in the town. I just wanted to put it to your attention, um, if that's the case, then, I think they've got a slight budget this year.
They, they do.
Dollars.
Five hundred bucks or something like that, right?
Very small.
And I'm just saying, maybe people would contribute to it, I'd be willing to contribute to it, uh, maybe we could get a new tree.
And Art has a, a V S O budget, he's their veteran service officer, so he has a budget with some room in it too for supplies, so.
Reason I mention it is last year, they, the Christmas time, they had lights on.
Maybe that did it?
I don't know what did it, all I know is it's there anymore, so I'm saying, gee whiz, you know. It wouldn't be that much of a stretch to put a tree.
Wasn't feeling very festive here in Millville, huh?
No, no, no.
All right, fair enough.
You did a nice job, your reading was very, very well done.
Thanks.
Did a good job.
She's killing it over there, all right. Selectment reports.
I've got one too.
Something too?
Yeah, just uh, really briefly, uh, several months are upon us, which means central mass mosquito. Is back in action again, I saw the truck parked behind the library today, ready to go. Uh, they'll be spraying Millville every Monday for the next several weeks, different streets, different times, will be posted on their website. At three thirty every afternoon, I just happened to look at the website today and the streets that they are planning to do tonight. Bolducourt, Chestnut Hill Road, Hill Street, Kempton Road, Lendler Lane, Lorraine Lane, Milk Street, there, Street Lake Street. Any kind of um danger is incredibly minimal, like it always is with that kind of pesticide stuff. Uh, but some of the things the website offered was just close your streetside windows and stop the window A C units, central A C units don't use the outside air, so. You can go ahead and continue with that as it is, and that will be at least, I think, for the next four to six weeks, if not longer. That's all I got.
Do you know if they're gonna be uh just using the truck or are they gonna use a helicopter?
Uh, as far as I saw, it was just a truck.
Okay.
Um, uh, you know, uh, whether they use the helicopter or not, I have to look a little bit deeper into the website.
Chopper is when they got real issues that uh surfaced back in the day.
Yeah, they usually drop pellets into the standing water, yeah.
And then any residents that have any questions, comments, concerns, or want to know what they're spraying next, because we don't meet every Monday. C M M C P dot org is where you would get that information.
Cool, all right. Peter, town administration report?
Uh, I have four things. Uh, one, Metacomet, we got engaged with SEMREC just, just last week, okay, so all that I've been talking about. We concluded on a document and signed off on it, so we're, we're engaged, but we have outs to break up the engagement.
Sure.
Get ugly uh in the interim, because some of the things still need to be resolved to the satisfaction. Of folks on MECC like myself, okay? Uh, appointments, you're gonna start seeing appointments, appointment letters. To people who are re-up or whether we, we send them out, we ask them if they want to uh be reappointed to positions, and so we'll see where that is. So between now and, you know, your next meeting in the February, or the Ju, the July meeting, you'll be faced with some appointments. Um, we also have a cable uh committee, you know, that's been negotiating with Charter for. Going on three years now to try and get a deal done, and I've been. Assisting in that, particularly in the document exchange with the Charter people. Their people have been non-responsive until just lately, they finally have someone responsive. And uh, so that process has been re-upped, so we've been operating under the uh agreement, they're ten-year agreements. And uh, the, we've been operating now for almost two years under the old agreement, because uh, they've been pretty. It's been difficult to deal with them, I'll just put it that way. Um, last thing, and uh, Joe was there as well, as well as Jen was, I was a. A judge of the B M R civics projects uh that took place and uh. Um, at B M R last week, and that was a lot of fun, I was in the ninth graders thing, I, they, they had us judging fifty projects in two hours. I think I got the forty-five, I don't know, but you know, you could get into an extended conversation, every one of the students were. And some were groups of students, some were individuals, were, I think, did a great job and were passionate about what they were talking about, some of their projects were. Clean up the, they were number on cleaning up the Blackstone River, there were some about, you know, sports fields and, you know, enhancements and so forth. But anyway, I was glad, I was appreci, you know, glad to be asked, and I was very impressed with what I saw and the students, and they. They, some of them uh laughed at my jokes that I was giving, I thought that was pretty good.
So they were polite?
They were polite, yes. Yes, exactly.
Well-mannered kids.
Very much so.
To piggyback off Peter real quick here, the uh, the winner of the ninth grade was a project on what they call the pink tax, which is. Tax inflation on women's product, uh, the winner of the eighth grade was um basically getting more people to register their vote.
Okay.
Good stuff they were doing over there, yeah, really good.
All right.
You guys done?
Just about. See, uh, items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to meeting?
Nothing.
I like it, next regular meeting is June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I'll allow it.
My understanding on the school building committee, Rachel's now the liaison for that, correct?
Correct.
Have you had an opportunity to notify those folks and talk to them and get their schedule and everything?
Yeah, I went to their meeting last week.
Okay, so you all set on the schedule what they've got coming up and everything?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you had that, I talked to the superintendent and he, he was anxious to make sure that you guys got together, so I just want to make sure it happened, that's all. Make sure you get the dates and everything down, okay, good, super. Can you send me a copy of what you have for the dates?
Um, I, so he just sent it like a bunch of schedule appointment emails, so I could just type up a Word document of all the. Dates for you.
Yeah, just send, I, I'd like to, I'd like to attend them as well, just because it's interesting to me to see what's going on with that as a school building. Thanks.
All right, we're good?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to enter executive session by roll call. Uh, move that the board of selectmen enter an executive session to comply with or act under authority of any general law, specifically M G L, chapter thirty A. Subsection twenty-one F and G to review assorted executive session minutes. Uh, B, I move that the board of selectmen enter an executive session per M G L, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three. Discuss strategy relative to litigation, including but not limited to Detoma versus Millville, Garden. to discuss strategy relative to litigation, including but not limited to Detoma versus Millville, Garden Wonders, where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Uh, C, I move that the board of selectmen enter an executive session per M G L, chapter thirty uh, A, subsection uh, twenty-one A two to discuss strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, uh, deputy chief, uh, fire chief, police chief, only returning to open session to adjourn.